Good afternoon. I'd like to call the February 25th, 2025 School Board Budget Work Session to order. First, we have an update on compensation from Dr. Huff.
Well, good afternoon. Chair Coker, Vice Chair Hudgens, members of the board, Dr. Murray. Please be able to provide a compensation update this afternoon as part of the FY26 Superintendent's Proposed Budget. First, I want to start with some successes that we've had the past couple of years with our compensation strategy. We've reduced some vacancies in some key positions. Bus driver vacancies have been reduced by over eighty percent, day porters by more than two-thirds, instructional assistant vacancies forty percent over two years. Our increase in daily substitute rate from our pandemic lows is about twenty to twenty-five percent higher fill rate, and it's also created a pathway to teaching. Some compensation considerations that we'll look at today include our scaled positions, which are teachers, instructional assistants, and then our newer scales that are active this year are for support services, speech, occupational and physical therapy, and then our school security officer scale. We also have graded ranges as well as bonus structures that are existing, and a short discussion of our substitute teacher pay. So this is our most recent Title II data. We did add an additional year, the 22-23 school year. The important line here is the orange line at the bottom of completers, and you can see that those are just under four thousand completers, which is largely unchanged since the 15-16 school year. This slide shows our VDOE completer data. About nine thousand people enrolled in Virginia. Teacher education programs, both alternative and traditional programs, in the 22-23 school year, about thirty-eight hundred completed, and about sixty-eight completed in mathematics. So just to give you an idea, we have about twenty-six math classes taught virtually. We have about nineteen vacancies, so we could hire forty-five of those sixty-eight ourselves. There are one hundred and thirty-two other school divisions in Virginia, and this also assumes that all of those candidates did end up teaching math. Sometimes people complete and then realize they can use their math skills in a different career, or move away, or take time out of the workforce for some reason. The scale of hiring, we hired almost three thousand people last year, including full-time, part-time, substitute, and temporary employees. So when we say we're a large employer, that's high-volume hiring. Teacher is our most common job title. We have over five thousand teachers. Our annual attrition rate for teachers is down, so we're celebrating that, and you can see it's a steady decrease from our high of the 21-22 school year. Last year was about eight point four seven percent. National average pre-pandemic was around eight percent, so it's not quite back down to pre-pandemic levels, but almost. Sometimes people ask, is your attrition different among general ed and special education teachers? So we do aggregate, or we look at that data separately, and you can see that our attrition rate is actually a little bit lower, a lower percentage for special ed teachers. And we have to remember that's also calculated on a different base because there are many more general ed teachers, but they're in the ballpark of being roughly similar. We also look at our cumulative teacher attrition by month, and you can look at December, for example, was the last month that we captured, and you can see that our attrition is pretty much on track to mirror last year so far. So the 23-24 school year is that dark red line, and then the dotted blue line is this school year. So we look pretty similar to last year so far. Teacher starting pay, we're proposing to start at fifty-five thousand forty-seven. This proposal increases the starting salary by two percent, and then also includes a step increase totaling about a three percent total for experienced teachers. The step is consistent with that last teacher salary study that suggested we need to continue to give attention to the steps so that we don't recreate compression. For those maybe watching at home, compression is when someone who's brand-new with no experience makes a very similar amount to a more experienced teacher. And I did attend all of the town halls this year, and that is something that we did here a few times for our teachers that they want to ensure that wasn't recreated, and so this step makes sure to maintain some distance there for successful experience. This is our FY26 proposed teacher scale. It has lanes for bachelor's, master's, and doctorate. And another position I would like to highlight is the instructional assistant position. We increased pay for this position in FY22 and in FY23. In FY24, we increased pay by creating a separate scale for instructional assistant positions, and we'd like to continue that progress. It's a direct contact role with students. I was speaking recently with a principal of a high-needs school, and she was emphasizing how that consistency and continuity within the school is so important, and having those same faces, you know, come back after break and the next school year really has an influence on student attendance and the willingness of students to take those academic risks. So we want to do what we can to create continuity there. About seventy percent of these positions are providing adult support required by IEPs or helping to specialize education for student needs. These are our instructional assistant vacancies by month. The important line here is the green line at the bottom. That's the FY25 line. So we've had some really good success with lowering our vacancies. We tripled the amount of recruiting events for this position this year. So thank you to our recruiting and staffing team, and really, all of our members of all of our teams come out and help with our job fairs, but we really have had some success with reducing those vacancies. This is our cumulative instructional assistant attrition by month, and you can see that that looks a little different than our line for our teaching staff. It's a little bit higher. This is a position that, you know, only works during the school year, and it is an hourly position, and so typically you do see a little bit more attrition with those positions, but we're running a little bit ahead of last year, but still lower than our high of the 22-23 school year. And you can see this is our annual attrition rate for instructional assistants, and it has gone down each of the last two years. So our proposal is to increase the salary by about three percent. It would be two percent plus a step, similar to the other scales, but the IA scale ends at step twenty-five. And you might recall, last year, we expanded the teacher scale to forty steps, so we are recommending adding that step twenty-six to the IA scale to retain experienced instructional assistants. We have about eighty-five employees, so about a little over ten percent of our IAs are at that top step, and we think that's going to be important because this proposed budget also includes an additional seventy-plus IA position. So that is going to be a big recruiting lift, and so we do need to retain those folks that are current on board on that step twenty-five. This is the FY26 proposed IA scale. You might remember that that first lane is general ed IAs, and there's some additional training required for special ed and one-to-one IAs, and so that's that IA two lane. So you can see the starting salaries there would be seventeen thirteen and seventeen ninety-nine. The student support services scale, this is a new scale this year. As a reminder, this is positions like speech-language pathologists and occupational and physical therapists, school psychologists, audiologists, and social workers. Last year, a new scale was approved to align with the regional school market average, and we find that that's moving pretty quickly. The goal was to retain staff and mitigate the increase in the use of costly and hard-to-procure contracted services, and we wanted to become more competitive at the midpoint and maximum of the graded range there, which we found we were lagging. Most of the provided services are required by IEPs, and even with late implementation due to kind of that delay in the state budget last year, we didn't know that this could be afforded until June, so we weren't able to really market this during our recruiting season. We still saw a decrease in vacancies. We had six fewer SLP vacancies this year and three fewer school psychologist vacancies. So that was a hopeful sign when that was implemented, you know, late, and our proposal was to continue this progress with the step and then the two percent market increase, so it would be a total of the three. And then, again, this ends at step thirty-five, which is shorter than that teacher scale. Last year, the teacher scale was updated to forty steps, so we would propose extending the student support services scale to step thirty-six to retain those experienced service providers. I think we only have about eight employees at the top of this scale, but those are very specialized areas, so that's very important to us. The school security officer is the last scale that we have. It currently includes twenty-five steps, and so the proposal is to extend that to step twenty-six as well to retain our experienced SSOs and promote continuity in our safety and student staff safety procedures. And this includes the two percent market increase and a step to recognize successful experience. The review of compensation history for our graded range positions, and I know you are familiar with this, but as a reminder to the community, graded range is different than a step scale. It includes a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum, as opposed to equalized steps for, you know, years of experience or other measures. So the salary study that was completed in FY23 using fall 2021 market data suggested that our goal should be a sixteen dollar an hour starting salary. The progress that we've made so far was FY23, we moved to twelve dollars an hour. We were under twelve dollars an hour at that time, and then we moved to fourteen dollars an hour in 2024, and then this year, fiscal year twenty-five, we moved to fourteen forty-two minimum. This gives you an idea of the attrition in our graded range positions. That attrition is a little bit higher than other positions. The most FTEs on our graded range, as an example, are bus drivers, food service associates, and day porters, but graded range applies to anyone who isn't on a step scale, so it can be anything from, you know, accounting to IT to curriculum specialist. This is our cumulative attrition by month for graded range positions, and you can see that that dotted blue line is kind of where we are this year. And again, just like with teachers, it's tracking very similar to last year. The proposal is to move to fourteen seventy per hour as the minimum, and then it would include a three percent target increase that would be inclusive of both market adjustment and experience. Just a moment to talk about our substitutes, because we do have over three thousand substitutes now. They're a significant factor in our teacher working conditions, and they're required for our teachers to access all the benefits that we offer, such as sick time, for example, or paid parental leave. Our target is a ninety percent fill rate. That means when you call out for a substitute, nine out of ten times, you have a substitute. That was kind of the pre-pandemic national gold standard, and we've learned that our substitutes are an incredibly important pipeline of candidates for full-time positions as teachers, as instructional assistants, and other positions within the school division. And it's a pathway for career switchers, in a way for people to try out working with students in the teaching profession. Our fill rate through January seventeenth this year is eighty-nine percent. This month has dipped a little bit. We're in cold and flu season and ready for spring to come. Our fill rate last year was eighty-seven percent, so that is way up from our pandemic lows of in the mid-sixties. This shows something that we're really proud of, which is the substitutes that we've hired to full-time and part-time roles. So this is all of last school year. We hired two hundred and fifty-three substitutes into regular full and part-time roles. A hundred and three of those were hired as certified teachers, and we are also finding that many people are doing a two-step process where they like subbing, and they're accepting an annual substitute role with benefits, and then working to become certification or licensure-eligible, and then accepting that full-time teaching position. This year, just through December, we had already hired two hundred and eighty full and part-time employees from our substitute roles. A hundred and eleven of those were teachers. Current status of our daily rate, last year, we were fortunate when that state budget came through in June, that the school board supported the hundred and thirty-six dollar daily rate, and you can see that that puts us right in between Henrico and Hanover and competitive with the Richmond regional average for this year. And these are our high-demand days. We still have a high-demand day rate of two hundred and three dollars on Friday, another high-demand days, and you can see that on average, our fill rate over time has been five to six percentage points boosted on those high-demand days. And what we found is a lot of times, that attracts people to substitute. It's, well, I can try that, and I'll try it on Fridays, and then they realize they enjoy it and sometimes are available to substitute other days of the week, or consider education as a career. The proposal is to maintain the daily rate for FY26, maintain the high-demand rate of two hundred and three dollars for FY26. And then just a moment to review our bonus structure. The proposal includes a continuation of our current bonus structure. We have bonus amounts of three thousand dollars for teacher contracts at high-needs schools, bus driver bonus of three thousand dollars, the instructional assistant tutor, monitor, and library assistant, and then the custodians. Some things to keep our eye on as we move towards the future with compensation. We're still in a national shortage of certified teachers. We have those stated goals of sixteen dollars an hour to start for our graded range positions and sixty thousand dollars to start for teachers. We are competing with healthcare for our nurse roles and with private companies for our CDL roles, and we know that, you know, we can't match corporate employers, but it is something to keep in mind and keep our eye on and be aware of. And then also our public budget processes, you know, the budget that the board will adopt and recommend this week, it determines pay through June of 2026. So that can be sometimes a little bit less agile in the marketplace than, say, a corporate competitor. So those are just some things to think about as we consider the future. And then also, just always to remember, our why behind our compensation. We want to attract highly skilled and motivated employees to work with our students. We want to prevent costly turnover. We want to maintain morale by working towards fair and competitive pay and align with that Richmond regional market, and we know that parents are children's first teachers, but the most important school-based factor in our students' education are our employees. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. Board members, is there any discussion? Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Slide twenty-one talks about the school safety officer proposal scale, taking them from step twenty-five to step twenty-six, I think. But I don't, is there, and I might have missed it, and if so, I do apologize, is the scale in the presentation?
No, it is not, but we can certainly provide that, and it's in our compensation plan.
Okay. And then the increase to, I guess, that step twenty-six, the overall price tag on that?
It really would be, we can break that down, but it's really just to ensure that those people at the top get the full three as opposed to just the two percent.
Right. I understand that, but just looking at, what is that going to cost?
Sure.
Should that be achieved and applied in FY26?
Okay. That involves twenty employees, and it looks like the, it's like it's twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-six. I can double-check that figure for you.
I say kudos for coming up with the number on the spot. I was not anticipating that at all. That was pretty good. Thank you.
Ms. Hudgens?
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you for this very great breakdown. On page thirty-three, you're talking about the bonuses that we give to, like, exactly, teachers at high-needs schools. Have we noticed, because we increased those last year, right? We did not increase them. From the, yeah, we talked about increasing them. From the time that we implemented them, have you seen an uptick in, are they effective? Have you seen that?
Well, one of the challenges has been that this was, these were started with ESAR funds, and because of sort of the late adoption of the state budgets the last couple of years, we haven't known whether or not these were going to be available during our prime recruiting season. So this is really the first year that these are in a proposed budget and likely to be available during the prime recruiting season. So I think that our, you know, I mean, last year, we weren't offering that. When we were offering, we were saying, you know, this is proposed. We don't know what's going to happen in June. We don't know the state number. So I think that this year could potentially be a telling year as far as data, because each time, it's been FY24 and FY25 years have been late, and most of the people had to make an employment decision prior to this. Now, certainly, the people who are in those schools, who received them the previous year, we heard from them that, you know, it's a retention factor, but in terms of it being a recruiting factor, I think this year is kind of a bigger test.
Cool. I'm very curious to see, because I remember you saying that last year. One more question. This is just very, I might have, I don't think I missed it, but steps, so we've got a two percent increase and then an additional step. Can you really quickly explain how steps work? Does every year, someone get a step increase, or do we give a step increase? How is?
Yeah, it has to be included within the budget, but the idea is that the two percent is kind of a cost-of-living or market adjustment. So the whole scale, for example, in a step scale pay plan as opposed to a graded range pay plan, the whole scale would move two percent, which would mean that your starting rate would move two percent. And then the other percent of the raise would be people having a successful year of experience. And say, for example, let's say a first-year teacher this year, they complete their first year successfully. Their principal recommends that they return. They receive, you know, a good evaluation. They're going to come back next year. They would get an additional percent to kind of recognize they have gone through every aspect of the school year. They've been successful, and that differentiates them from a brand-new teacher who may be starting in the fall. And by doing that, that's kind of what was recommended in that teacher salary study. It prevents compression because you have movement of the scale related to cost of living and inflation and that type of thing, but then you have some movement within the scale that is recognizing people moving on in their career. And when we started this and were doing that study, I remember some of the concerns were that, you know, people that were expected to, for example, be the mentors, be the leaders of various teams, were making a very similar rate to people who didn't have any experience at all. And so we think it's important to kind of keep that, the mid-level of experienced folks in our schools and have some differentiation with their compensation, because many times they're taking on teacher leader roles.
Thank you.
Kind of in line with what Mr. Pronto was asking regarding the SSOs, and I'm not asking for additional math on the spot, but for our IAs and student support, if we could get those numbers as well for those going up the additional step.
The IA number is eighty-six thousand four eighty, and the student support looks like it's eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-three.
Impressive. Thank you. Appreciate that. That was my only question. Ms. Chatters?
Sorry. It was regarding the substitute. You sent us a spreadsheet before a couple of weeks, the snow days got me confused on when you actually sent it, but I know we have it. And when I was looking at the numbers for the vacancies that we have, I was asked, I wanted to ask your opinion on, do you, when you're recruiting and trying to fill those vacancies, are you getting any feedback on why certain locations are more preferred than others?
We aren't getting feedback on that and we haven't really individually sought feedback on that. But a success that we have had is we had that fair at Salem Church Middle School in November. And recently, like within the last two weeks, we ran fill rates for all of those schools and they are higher. So we are wanting to catch, we've got, set a reminder to capture that again in a month to see, are they going to stay higher? Because I think if they do, one of the things that tells us is that maybe having these fairs in a specific geography matters because people, I don't think, drive a long way often for substitute assignments. And sometimes you learn about subs, can remember being a substitute and you get the call at 5:00 AM. You know, it's kind of last minute sometimes when someone's child wakes up sick or you might be needed at the last minute. And so I think they are somewhat geographically sensitive and that the number on the Dale District Fair that we had, those were encouraging. So far, we had not seen similarly high numbers from the Matowica Fair that we had, but it was a month later and we've had a lot of snow, plus the holidays. So I'm not sure if it's a good test yet, which is why we want to run it again in a month to see if that looks like it's a differentiating factor. Because if it is, that tells us that we need to employ that strategy more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
Next, we have a 2025 legislative program update from Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board members. I'm giving kind of a brief update in legislative session, and I will note that I'm going to come back March 11th for some additional comments, likely be focused on specific legislation purposes. But a couple of big picture updates. One, as you know, the session has adjourned as of Saturday, sunny day. They did agree to a budget, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. The governor does have at this point in time 30 days to act on legislation, to sign, amend, or veto the legislation. And obviously, the veto session will occur in April. One of the things that we've done a little bit differently this year is to establish a tracker for legislation. As you've seen, because I know you've looked closely at the tracker, that there's almost just over 200 bills that we've been tracking throughout the session. A lot of them have changed. I will have an additional update later this week with all the flurry of activity that occurred over the weekend as the session adjourned. But some of those important topics we had obviously were assessments, Colton's interest, early childhood FOIA, health, military student families, notifications, procurement resolutions. So you'll see some of those things in the tracker. Again, I'll talk more about that in March. A couple of general highlights on legislation, some things you heard a lot about. And one was discussion regarding cellphone policies. As we know, you adopted your own cellphone policy. The legislation will require us to go back and look, if the governor signs it in its current form, to look at our cellphone policy, to see kind of how we match up with that. One of the pieces that we'll have to look closely at is the definitions of consequences with regards to cellphone policies. And essentially, the General Assembly has asserted that should be no formal consequences for cellphone policy violations. So as we kind of match up the governor's actions on that, we'll go through with the Policy Review Committee and obviously back to the board if we have to, and looking at how our policy matches up with that. And the second piece is there's been a lot of discussion, the General Assembly, with regard to the current framework for school assessments and accountability. The legislators really tried to look at either trying to delay the performance evaluations going forward, the accountability network. But likely what's to occur obviously is that the governor is very invested in the framework the Department of Education has put forward, that will stay in place. We may see some language coming out of the governor's amendments to articulate that. It's unlikely anything would happen beyond there simply because there's not enough votes in the legislature to override that piece. So we, we assume we'll keep working forward with Dr. Pope and her instructional team and with Dr. Booth, obviously, to assume obviously that, that piece of Department of Education. The last larger legislative update is we spent a lot of time this session working closely on legislation with regards to our long-term subs. As you know, the law defines how long you can substitute teach essentially, and that we worked to try to extend that from 90 days, 180 days. There had been in place that in the law, but there's a sunset clause on that. And essentially, we're trying to work to remove the sunset clause and put that in place. As you know, from the perspective in Chesterfield County, our goal is always to hire a full-time teacher for every classroom. The long-term subs is something we say is in our toolbox in case we can't find obviously that credentialed person immediately. So we want to maintain obviously having that, that tool obviously for our hiring purposes. I would note that we spent a lot of time working on our delegation on this piece. There is a difference of opinion for some legislators about the benefit of that program. And so while legislation did pass, we'll be looking closely to see what action the governor does take on that. But certainly, we'll be having some conversations with our schools and our principals, understanding that at some point in time, it's very clear the legislature may unwind that program to essentially have that. And so we're trying to make sure at least that we as a county know that it's coming. We have asked for additional time to be able to unwind that, knowing the impact it's had in our school division. So I'll have more information about that, but I do want to alert you that while that did pass favorably for us, looking to see kind of what action the governor does take on that. The next piece obviously is with the, the budget piece and Mr. Meister will obviously have a larger conversation with you on that. But one of the big successes that we did have this session was the removal of the support cap, which as you know, is something that we've talked about pretty much since 2008 when it got put in place. So it is a huge success story, you know, for you as board member, something you talked about last year with the J-LARC study, that was one of your top priorities. The legislature did come through with that. Obviously, we still need to wait for the governor to take action on the budget, but that was a big success story for us. The second piece was they put in place a $1,000 bonus, which is effective June 1. There is no local match that's required from that. They've also made some investments in special education as well as some other minor investments with regards to math supports as well. Mr. Meister will talk about obviously direct impacts it has on, on our school division, admittedly very favorable. The last piece I do want to note is that the legislature has spent some time, as recently as this past Saturday, looking at the impact that any kind of cuts from the federal government will have on the state budget. Their impetus right now is mainly of concern about job loss. So someone employed by the federal government, if there are cuts in Washington DC, what impact would that have, knowing that we have a significant amount of Virginians who are employed by the federal government? They are going to look more closely and look into if they have to call a special session, if they had to put in place some investments to deal with that. Obviously, the Commonwealth Virginia receives this good amount of money with regards to the federal government, and we do as well as the school division. We've not seen any direct impacts to date, but it's important, we'll be closely following the legislative conversation as any regards to federal government cuts that come down. Again, when I come in March 11th, I'll discuss and share with you a little bit more, some legislative updates on legislative, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board members, is there any discussion? Ms. Chatters?
Mr. Smith, I just want to say thank you for that spreadsheet. I love the way it's organized. It's very easy to read, very easy to follow, and I'm an LIS person, so it was just like punch and play. I loved it. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to, I don't know if you can answer this or just explain, because we did get a lot of, I got a few emails and we went back and forth about the long-term sub discussion. If, if we can clarify for the community, not necessarily just the impact, as we talk about an adult in the classroom to, to help, but the, the questions that we were, that I was getting were related to, is that a qualified person in the classroom versus not getting a qualified person? Does that person take the spot of a qualified person if recruiting goes well? Like, what do we do in that situation? If you have, if you can elaborate, please. If not, then we can.
Yeah, I think, I think we always have a qualified person in our classroom, all the time. I think certainly we want to have a, someone who is full-time, not a substitute person. But obviously, when we have gaps, sometimes it's related to different hiring needs. Maybe it's math, maybe it's science, and certainly maybe a last-minute situation. That, the long-term sum allows us to fill a gap for that period of time. The other concept we try to work with is we want to bring that particular substitute teacher up to be a full-time employee for us. So we want to work with them on any training, credentialing, additional they may need to do as well. Again, I use the analogy that it's, it's a tool in our toolbox. It's, it's not the first thing we look to do, but it's something if we need to do to ensure we have a qualified person in front of the classroom, we want to make sure we have access to that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pronto?
Thank you. I think I said this last year, I don't know if the county heard me or not, we should probably just build you a road from here to the state and back again for the amount of miles that you trek back and forth. So again, thank you on our behalf for doing that. I want to go back to the very first thing you covered, which was the cellphone. So I want to make sure, did I hear you correctly that there were to be, I guess the conversation, nothing's finalized, but the conversation was no consequences for cellphone violations. Can you expound a little bit more on that?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll come back in, in March, I think the, with more specifics on that impact. Also want to wait for the governor to take action. So in a positive way, the General Assembly agreed with the governor and Department of Education when he first put forward the notion that we had to have a cellphone policy. I think where they struggled with was what kind of consequences should be part of that. Their focus is mainly of concern about not suspending or expelling someone for consequences. So I think that they were, that's their larger piece there as well. I think that, and we have some of those pieces in our policy, but I, I'm going to come back to the board, Policy Review Committee obviously will take a look at that as well. The positive thing is that we're ahead of the curve. And the one thing I do want to note when we talk about cellphone policies is, I mean, knock on wood, I mean, I think our schools have embraced the concept. I think, you know, it's not the most favorable thing there for students and for staff as well, but I think that over time too, I think we'll see the, the impact, hopefully in a positive way.
And just to clarify, so the conversation would be the state coming out and saying, you shall not have consequences versus, hey, we're not going to tell you what you need to do, that's, that's up to the district to decide. However, you really shouldn't expel or suspend. Is that the direction that the conversation is going?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's, it's the, the nudge, but it has a lot of shals in there. So I think that certainly we'll have to align our consequences to make sure there. I think where there is leeway, obviously, we'd have the conversation with the board to determine what leeway you want to take, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I don't have any other questions. Did you have any? Okay, Ms. Hodgins.
Okay. I do have one more related to what Mr. Pronto was saying. So as I imagine the consequences for, for cellphones, so say Little Johnny has a cellphone out and the teacher says, don't, you know, put it away. And then maybe his behavior turns from a cellphone-related issue and then it goes to belligerence or crazy or whatever. So is there, are we parsing those apart? Are we, say, like, how, how does that work?
I think, so unfortunately, each situation's going to be different, but if I'm thinking through the, the situation you just described, I think you'd have to kind of parse out different things. I think you're looking at our current policy, right? So if there's a cellphone violation, you always need to look at what that violation is, if there's a consequence with that. If there's subsequent, something, additional action that takes place, a disruption, I think you have to look to see kind of what consequence is involved with that. And I think also taking it all together, knowing that there is one situation. So I think, and you've seen that with some of the cases, you've had to look through for student discipline, to know each one's kind of unique. But I think that is certainly always a concern with the cellphone piece, and we heard that from our, from the classrooms, right? It's the, do I have to take it away because that confrontation poses significant risk as well, so.
Just thank you for all your hard work. It's a busy, busy season and you do handle it well, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next, we have an annual report from the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee from Mr. Eckert.
As introduced, I'm Sean Eckert. I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Citizen Budget Advisory Committee for Chesterfield County Public Schools this year. I'm joined by several other members of the committee this afternoon. We're thrilled that the weather finally cooperated and we're able to be here this afternoon to share some of our committee's observations and recommendations. Let's see here. Purpose of CEBAC is to assist the school board in the evaluation and allocation of resources and to ensure high-quality, effective, and efficient school division. The seven citizens that you have appointed to CEBAC are listed here. I'd like to thank each of them for the time and energy they have volunteered to share with the committee. We meet about 10 times a year. We also visit several schools each and all have a shared interest in ensuring that CCPS schools are as successful as they can be while using the financial resources available as efficiently as possible. Certainly also want to thank Dr. Murray, Bob Meister, Mrs. Coker, who regularly attends our meetings, as well as many other CCPS team members who have provided presentations and information to our committee. Bob and his team are always very forthcoming about the opportunities and the challenges that CCPS faces when determining how to allocate the limited resources that are made available to the school system by the county and the Commonwealth. We're all, always able to get the information that we are looking for and we get the opportunity to ask a lot of questions and it's a real, just great group of folks to work with. The work of our committee this year basically produced a couple of themes, you know, one is that Chesterfield County public schools are underfunded, and as a result, the superintendent's proposed budget is based on inadequate resources. That's not just the opinion of the seven Chesterfield County residents who serve on the committee. The General Assembly's Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission published a study a couple of years ago, I know you know this, that acknowledged that public schools across Virginia are underfunded. That was quantified as underfunding in Chesterfield County in the range of 200 to 300 million dollars. What that means is that our schools are only getting about 80 or 85% of the funding that they need according to the nonpartisan J-LARC, J-LARC Commission. Building maintenance needs and recurring, recurring replacement cycles for things like school buses and IT equipment are chronically underfunded and cobbled together from one-time sources when, when we have them. Initial proposed revenue increases included in the governor's proposed budget essentially ignored the findings of the J-LARC study. And while the General Assembly has added some additional resources, which is, which is great, this modest additional funding, as well as the county's preliminary proposed contribution, still are inadequate to meet the needs of the CCPS schools. Inflation last year was about 3%. So if we've got a budget that's only growing at 3% or less, then that budget is really shrinking in real terms, despite the fact that we have a growing enrollment and the growth is more rapid for students like English language learners and special education students who need more resources, not fewer resources. I'm going to turn it over to the CEBAC Vice Chair, Renal Patel, who's going to elaborate on, on some of these themes.
Good afternoon. Renal Patel, I'm the Vice Chair for the CEBAC Committee and would like to continue on with the recommendations. So looking at the current slide, this slide talks about the revenue growth we'll be seeing for FY26. As noted, we are expecting the state revenue to reflect about an increase of 12.1 based on the governor's proposed budget from early to on the governor's proposed budget from early December. And we are expecting the county to put in roughly around $15 million, which is broken into two components. One is the normal ongoing budget transfer, and the second piece is related to the spring line lease at the District 60 office complex. The overall projected revenue is $25.6 million, which reflects about 2.7% increase from FY '25 budget. Despite the increase in the revenue, there's a deficit of $16.8 million, which is reflected in the proposed budget. Moving on to the employee compensation. In the prior slide, we noted the $25.6 million increase, and a big chunk of that is going towards the employee compensation, which is a 3% raise for a total of $20.2 million. CEBAC fully supports the 3% raise for all employees. Despite the 3% increase, as Sean noted earlier, this barely keeps up with the inflation. Additionally, this 3% is going to take the starting teacher salary to just around $55,000. It is great to see that we are heading in the right direction of achieving the long-term goal of reaching the 60K, but as we stand today, this is still not competitive enough when compared to other districts. Lastly, the salary study set a goal for us to reach $16 per hour for the graded employees. With the 3% raise, this will take us to a minimum hourly rate of $14.70. The salary study was our guide and benchmark for all CCPS employee wages, and currently we are falling further behind in meeting those benchmarks for some of our most difficult positions to fill. Moving on to the regular and major maintenance, as noted in our previous slides, there is a deficit of roughly $17 million, which is reflected in the proposed budget. On top of that, the proposed budget also outlines other needs to be considered for funding, considered pending funding. And one of those other needs includes funding towards regular maintenance to support the current 67 CCPS school buildings. This is to support the day-to-day work to keep the building running, which includes painting, carpentry, electrical, et cetera. CEBAC recommends this becomes a regular budget item and build a plan to increase the budget annually. Another item is major maintenance, and you have heard CEBAC over the years advocating for the funds to support the major maintenance bucket. Our concern is around the sustainability of funding this bucket in the coming years. The annual maintenance expenditure over the last few years have averaged roughly $20 to $30 million, and currently for FY '26, the minimum funding needs has been satisfied. However, it is uncertain post-2026. The funding for major maintenance should be a non-negotiable item in the budget, especially if the issues such as roof or HVAC comes around, it can disrupt the classroom learning and put additional strain on the staff. On top of that, as we see a rise in the inflation, the cost to perform major maintenance will continue to increase over time, and therefore it's critical more than before to make sure we manage this bucket. I'm going to pass on to Jason Young to wrap up the recommendations. Thank you.
My name is Jason Young. I'm the Clover Hill representative of CEBAC, and this is my fourth year on CEBAC, and unfortunately, it's my last year as well. And I just want to say, before I talk about my few slides, that I've just spent a tremendous opportunity to kind of see the CCPS budget and the inner workings of it, and how it's struggled to keep pace with our growing student population and its needs in Chesterfield County. And I think our committee plays a small but really important role in helping to shape that budget and address what we see are the most critical needs facing our school system. And I just want to say thank you. I've been here a couple of times because you always listen to us, and in many cases, you've actually acted on our recommendations. With that said, I do have a few slides where we do need your help, right, in kind of pushing the ball forward. And on this slide, Chromebooks, other technology buses, what we're talking about here is sustainable replacement cycles. And I know Sean mentioned this a little bit, but we've essentially kicked the can down the road for many, many years by not investing enough money to replace equipment, technology, and things like buses that outlive their intended lifespan. And the cost of this lack of investment that we make, right, is that we have to pay for increased maintenance to maintain the staging equipment. We have equipment in our schools right now that's essentially non-functional, right, because we can't find replacement parts anymore for that equipment. And obviously, we have technology and equipment that is, becomes unusual, and that disrupts student learnings and our staff's ability to teach. So there's nearly $10 million right now in unmet technology and equipment needs in this year's budget that we don't have any revenue to address. And I'll just give you one example, and it's our bus fleet. In last year's budget, we noted that the bus fleet had 254 buses that were over 15 years old. And as we know, these buses continue to age, right? They cost more to maintain, they break down more frequently as they approach the end of their useful life. And we know that one new bus costs about $145,000 per year. Now, I'm not in the business of seeing what things are going to cost in the future, but I think they're probably going to cost more in the future than they do today. So one of our recommendations is that we ask that you work with our county to consider a one-time injection to allow us to develop more sustainable replacement cycles for things like our buses, our technology, and other equipment that we need. Again, I'd like to thank you, talking about mental health. CEBAC has, our recommendations the past two years was to eliminate what was known as a shared counselor positions at our schools. And what these positions were is where two schools essentially shared one school counselor. And this caused immense problems, right? Whenever a student had a need for that school counselor, and that school counselor was not at that school, right? It was at the other school. And so everyone had to scramble to figure out and to work with that student because the school counselor was at the other school. So eliminating these shared counselor positions, it was probably the number-one thing we heard at our school visits, when the schools that had them, right? Please get rid of that for us. Please get us our full-time counselor. That was a great step to address some of the rising mental health challenges that we're seeing. This year, we'd just like to echo that the School Health Advisory Board has issued some additional recommendations around school-based mental health positions, and we'd like to endorse those recommendations. I think those recommendations include six additional school social workers, two additional attendance school social workers, six additional school psychology positions, six additional education diagnosticians, an additional school nurse, and this is to cover the needs of students at our career and technical centers, and then any additional nurse, counselor, and psychologist, social work positions that are going to be required at the new schools. One other thing that we'd like to just throw into the bucket, too, is just a recommendation to look at, any telehealth collaborations with local providers that would facilitate access to clinicians in the community during school hours and after-school hours when they're needed for students that are in crisis. I think that's something that the county is looking at as well. And lastly, our committee supports the call in the budget for additional CCPS staff to meet the needs of our gifted students and additional school-based administrative personnel. I think this is probably our top thing, one of the top things we heard in our school visits this year, is that our smaller elementary schools, so elementary schools with a population less than, student population less than 900, that they need additional administration to help with the increased responsibilities that school administration have. Testing requirements, evaluation of teachers, and the greater focus that they need to place on security at the schools. We know that elementary schools with a student population over 900 students, they're afforded additional administrative positions, but if you're right under 900, right, you don't get that. And that's creating pressures on the administrative staff at these slightly smaller elementary schools to get all their required duties accomplished with the manpower that they And lastly, as we said, Dr. Murray's proposed budget contains a $16.8 million shortfall in revenue, and that includes $14.1 million in student-facing needs and $2.7 million in other needs. So on the student side of things, $4 million to support additional staff to meet the mandated SOQ standards to support our growing ELL population. $9.7 million to support special education services for students with disabilities in need of an IEP. $285,000 to support the Chesterfield Recovery Academy. I'll note, this is just the money that we need to run the program. And $100,000 for the additional community and schools site, which I believe is matched by communities and schools as well. And then on the non-student-facing side, $2.7 million needed for school bus maintenance. I mentioned that before. Fuel increases, required software licenses, we're replacing five intercom systems that are at the end of our life cycles in five schools, and funding for new staff computers, primarily at Deep Creek. Everything that I just mentioned, right, is not something that our committee is saying, oh, this would be nice to have, right? These are expenses that we're going to incur this year, and we, that need to have funding for us. But because of the current budget shortfall, they can't be included in Dr. Murray's budget because he, by mandate, has to pass the balanced budget. So quite simply, we need to find money to fund these initiatives, and our charge to you is, right, to work with our county partners to make sure that we have that funding, at least to make sure that we fully fund our budget for next year. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it back over to Sean to conclude.
So some of this is preaching to the choir, certainly, but, you know, the CEBAC Committee really feels that the county has to find the funding to provide to schools in order to meet that $16.8 million that was listed as unfunded in Dr. Murray's budget, but we must go further. We need to compensate our employees in a manner that acknowledges that Chesterfield is competing with neighboring school systems, as well as the private sector, for qualified teachers and other workers that are essential to the success of students. We need a budget that adequately provides for routine building maintenance and major system replacements like HVAC and roofing. You know, we've got 67 schools, so it's not realistic to continue funding this type of maintenance, only when we are fortunate enough to find some one-time funds left over at the end of the year, or hope the county determines it has some available debt capacity for schools. It's too many buildings to act like this stuff isn't a consistent, annual, ongoing need. The same is true for school buses, for Chromebooks, for IT equipment, et cetera. All these replacement cycles really need to be built into the annually recurring budget. So, you know, that's the request from CEBAC this year. We're here to help you tell that story to the county, if you'd like us to, and we appreciate your time this afternoon. We'll take any questions, if you have any for us.
Thank you very much to all of you for your presentation this afternoon. And board members, is there any discussion? Mr. Pronto?
Thank you. I just want to highlight, and I hope she's okay with this, she's smiling, so I'm going to take that as a yes. Ms. Patel, thank you, obviously, to your entire committee on the CEBAC. Ms. Patel was just voted to the board on the Chesterfield Education Foundation. Her children are enrolled in CCPS. A lot of our volunteers that serve on these committees are in the same vote. But it just goes to show the dedication that you all have to help the school to grow, to champion, for whatever the budget might be and the different things that you see. So we greatly appreciate the time and energy that has been spent from CEBAC, from CAC, from all the other ones that end with "AC," to be able to come up here and say, hey, look, we recognize, right, J-Lark, we recognize that we're in upwards of, I wouldn't even say 200, I think it's nearly 300 million, of which that, you know, we are underfunded dramatically, and we're trying to figure out how to make that work with an 85% yield, if you will. That is a challenge in and of itself, and so 100% agree with everything that's been presented today, greatly appreciate the time to put forward that. This board has, as we did last year, conversations in regards to, if we see that excess, where does it go? And that's extremely difficult, because we love to say, oh, sure, everything's going to be covered, and not only are we looking for it to cover this year, but as in your presentation, 100% accurate, we need to start looking towards next year and figuring that out now, which is, you know, going to be further discussions that need to take place. So I just greatly appreciate CEBAC. Thank you for this presentation. So with all that being said, my one question is, have you had the opportunity to speak to the Board of Supervisors?
We have not. We have talked some with staff internally, and I have had some conversations with staff at the county. One of the things that our committee has talked about is, you know, participating in the county's budget process that sort of follows, and obviously, schedule's got a little confused here this February due to some constraints, but we certainly intend to reach out to your counterparts on the Board of Supervisors as this process continues.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I just thank you for all of your hard work, and as you stated in the beginning of your closing remarks, yes, you are definitely preaching to the choir. We hear you and are in the same court as you all are too, so appreciate it, and we will take all of these recommendations into consideration as we move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the proposed FY '26 operating budget and the five-year plan from Mr. Meister.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the board, Dr. Murray. CEBAC did a lot of my heavy lift for me here today, so I appreciate Mr. Eckert and gang on their work, of course, as well as my team, to get us to this point. The schedule is a little weird. This presentation was intended to be given to you guys a couple weeks ago, so some of the items in here may look a little dated as I talk about General Assembly still being in session and things like that, but work with me, we'll get there as we go through this. A reminder of where we are in the process, we are another shade of blue now. We're into February. The school board is, was set to approve their budget tonight. That will be Thursday. As we go forward, this will be your opportunity to hear a few new things in this session, including the five-year plan, as well as a few other items about grant and other funding. And we'll come back again this evening to talk a little bit more informally about what changes you may want to make in the budget. That will lead into, as CEBAC just mentioned, the county process, which kicks off with their budget in the March 12th, 13th, I guess the 12th, is when they roll out, and they'll have their series of town halls, et cetera, immediately following that. All will, we wait on the governor and his action on the General Assembly budget as well. Hopefully, we'll be able to come back to you in, we'll say, May, and wrap this whole thing up. A bit of a reminder to you all, again, CEBAC did a great job of this for me, so I will go relatively quick. FY '25 revised budget that the superintendent proposed had a $25.6 million increase in it, based on that governor's proposed budget. What that led to was about a $970 million budget that we spent a good part of the month talking to you about, talking to the community about, and that leaves us where we are today in terms of $25.6 million afforded underneath that governor's plan, the bulk of that going to compensation, the 3% raise and assorted nuance that Dr. Huff spoke to earlier, making up the bulk of that, a few other items under required and leased, as well as that $16.8 million of what we had been termed unfunded adjustments of about $16.8 million that we need to address. I won't walk through these again, but they're there for mostly the citizens to remind you of what was in that afforded budget. Again, the 3% compensation increase being the biggest of these additional school needs, the biggest of this group being the special education funding and the English language learner growth that we saw, as well as a handful of other items on here. This is what we'll need to look at and talk about as we better understand the state funding as we move forward. We also spent a fair amount of time talking to you about other needs. Again, CEBAC did a lot of the heavy lift for me here, and reiterating many of those around the operation staffing and compensation areas. I'll come back to each of these as we talk about the five-year plan. As I lay out the five-year plan, I layer in many of these into that plan, so you can see what that may cost over the next four or five years as we try to get to some of these in-states. So this is the first new slide I'll share with you here today. This is based on the afforded number, the $25.6 million. You can see the top line of operating dollars. That's the numbers we've been talking to you and the public about primarily over the course of the last month or so. That $969.4, $25.6 million increase represented about a 2.7% increase. That 969.4, 25.6 million increase represented about a 2.7% increase, slightly below inflation, just as Mr. Eckert said. As you look at the grants and food service lines, they're about 2.9% increase in grants and food service of about seven as food costs and other things continue to rise. As I flip forward on here, this is looking at the same chart, assuming we get funding for that $16.8 million of what we deem as needed, the bucket two of funding. You can see the operating fund increases to about 4.5% growth, something a little closer to reasonable. We'll still have a ways to go to catch up from some of the gaps that we currently do have. And again, grants at three, food service at seven, and you also see, are just here, of about $5.6 million budget relatively flat from last year. I'll pause here on the grants line just for a moment. I know there's been a lot in the news over the last month about federal funding and grants. I would like to say of that, around 40 that's represented here, about a million or so and a half of that will move over to the operating as we shift some of the seat assignments, if you will, from Head Start to our VPI program for our pre-K population. So if you think about that 40, it'll likely be closer to 39 as we move away from that particular federal program. Of the remaining 39 million, about 31 million of that is other forms of federal funding, split roughly equally between special ed or IDEA funding and the title grants, title 1, 2, 3, 4. There's another million or two of other assorted items in there, but the bulk of what would be the federal funding, give or take 31 million, is special ed, IDEA, and the title grants, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Sean talked a little bit about this earlier. I'll dive into it a little bit more in terms of what was in the general assembly's proposed budget, which is now a general assembly approved budget that's waiting for the governor's action. As a reminder, and as we've talked about it several times, the governor's proposal included about 12 million in additional funding for Chesterfield County. There were three main things, Mr. Smith hit on these as well, that were in both of the House and Senate versions of the budget. One is the support cap removal. You can see that was worth about 12 million to Chesterfield County. That was in the agreed-to version as well. Enhanced special ed funding of just about 3 million, that also was in the approved version that passed this weekend. And lastly, the $1,000 bonus for instructional and support positions, a version of that was in the version that passed through the general assembly this weekend, and it mirrors mostly that Senate proposal that indicated a June 1 payment of these for instructional positions. We'll be able to dig into that in more detail, should that survive the governor's red pen as we go through the next month or so. Lastly, as always is the case, we do need to sit and wait a little bit for the governor to take action on these. Unfortunately, our budget process doesn't allow us to wait, so we have to roll forward with what we know today. So that's a little bit of the state budget update. I'll come back again and roll those into a revised proposal for the school board to act on on Thursday in this evening session when we come back to you there, but safe to say, I'm going to assume most of that general assembly money gets rolled in and survives the governor's hand as we go forward, but we'll talk more about that as we go. The other big set of new information for you in this afternoon session is that five-year plan. So what we did is we built this, starting with that superintendent's proposed budget, including those items that were as of yet unfunded. So that $16.8 million I'm including in our baseline. I don't think there was a chance of us not having to fund those in one form or another, so I thought it was made sense to start from that area. And then most of what I did was roll in those initiatives from those two or three pages that I shared with you several times about. Here are the other things that are on our list that we see as really important. Nominal, or not nominal, growth of about 1,400 students. You've seen me present that trend chart over time. That's what's assumed in here. We're also going to assume we get to that $16 an hour and $60,000 teacher salary by 2029, and we're also, needless to say, going to plan for the opening of the new schools. Obviously, we've got the Deep Creek this year, but moving forward into the elementary schools, high schools, and other items on your CIP as we go forward. A reminder of those CIP items, nothing's new here, but most notably for this particular five-year plan, you see the items on the left. Deep Creek and Am Davis are part of your current budget, needless to say. Bensley West Area L will open in August of '26, and the West Area High being the big one in August of '27. So now we look at those three pages that I walked through several times with you all around what are those other items that aren't in Dr. Murray's budget that we know are needs to the district? What do we need to consider for those? Looking at each of those in turn, ongoing maintenance increases, 5 million annually, I built that in gradually over time to get there by FY '28. This is one of the items you heard Mr. Eckert talk about as well. Major maintenance, 35 million annually, get there over time by FY '30. Bus replacement, get to an $8.5 million annual replacement schedule for buses and do that by FY '30, and get to that little over $10 million technology replacement cycle also by FY '30. Would I want to get to those by FY '26? Absolutely. FY '27, yes, but in the spirit of providing a plan that is potentially achievable, I took the path of achieving these over the next five years. Staffing and student needs, I assumed additional 6 to 10 million for student growth, that 1,400 student count that I mentioned, as well as some shift in demographics, that adds up to about 30 million by the end of 2030. And I've also assumed an additional 2.5 million, so 10 million by the end of this period, for what I'll just call other initiatives, whether it be things like SEABACK talked about in terms of additional mental health support or other items that the superintendent may choose to lean into within the schools, et cetera. So could we make a case that that 10 million could be 20 or 30? Absolutely. What's in this current case assumes 10 by 2030. Lastly, compensation, none of these numbers will be new to you. To get to that $16 an hour minimum pay rate, I get there by FY '29, cost of $15 million annually to do that once we get there. $60,000 starting salary, I do that by FY '29 as well. That's a $50 million cost. And other compensation, whether it be additional bonuses or additional targeted compensation, I assumed additional 2.5 annually as well, so 10 million if you go out the next five years. So what does that look like when you stack this on top of each other? You can see FY '26, we're at about that $980 million number. You stack these on top of each other, you get to somewhere just over 1.2 billion. Not surprisingly, a 200 to 300 million shortfall from where we are today, potentially coincidental with J-LARK, but I don't think so. What does that look like annually? You can see the just over $40 million we've got in our bucket one plus bucket two this year, and based on that relatively conservative hope of getting there by 2030, it still requires about 60 to 1 million over the next couple of years, trending down to about 50 million incremental by FY '30 to get to what this 1.2 billion-dollar budget will result in. So a lot there. This would have been more interesting had we had a little bit more time between the 11th and our approval, but that school board approval will be the 27th. The slide was not updated. We'll come back on the 27th, and we'll also come back this evening with a further dive into some potential adjustments based on what we know in the student, in the state budget as of now. So with that, I will pause for questions from the board.
As always, thank you, Mr. Meister. Board members, is there any discussion? Mr. Pronto?
Thank you. Could you get out your crystal ball for me? There we go. All right, thank you. $16 an hour minimum wage by 2029 and a $60,000 starting salary by 2029. If we continue on the rate of inflation, are we planning properly ahead at a 16 and a 60 number, in your opinion?
I think the answer is comfortably, we probably will want to be higher when we get to 2029, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thinking of that, from an increase then, overall, we're looking at more than 50 million in the next four years.
Should we choose to target something north of that?
Correct, yes, yes.
Which is a very reasonable assumption, yes.
Yeah, okay. And has that been a part of any of your thought process, or are we aiming for the 16 and 60 to be able to say, we know that this is our goal to accomplish? And then if there's excess, then we'll obviously, you know, the board at that time entertain that?
To this point, we are, at least the way I've been approaching it, I'm open to other comments and suggestions. Until we reach this stated goal, I don't want to target above that, so we've been largely focused on the 16 and 60.
Very good, okay. Thank you.
I appreciate the plan and taking the replacement cycle schedules and putting them in something that we can digest along the way. Obviously, we need the state to come up with the funding that we're needing for the next five years, so definitely appreciate it. I don't really have any questions. You laid it out beautifully. Any other? Nope. I think you're off the hook.
Thank you. I'll see you this evening.
See you this evening. All right. Well, next, we have announcements, communications, and school board comments. School board members, are there any announcements or comments? So our next school board business meeting will be held this evening, February 25th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Public hearings on the superintendent's proposed FY 2026 operating budget and FY 2026 capital improvement plan will be held at the start of the meeting. If there's no further business, we need, we will enter into closed session, which will be held in the public meeting rooms, conference room. Madam Clerk, please announce the items for today's closed session.
It is my understanding that the school board desires to enter into closed session in accordance with Section 2.2-3711(a) of the Code of Virginia. The Virginia Freedom of Information Act is specifically under subsection 1, the discussion and consideration of personnel disciplinary matters, and 2, the discussion and consideration of student disciplinary matters and matters that would involve the disclosure of student records.
Members of the board, you have just heard the items requested to be discussed in closed session. Do I have a motion in that regard?
Make a motion to enter into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call, roll on the motion.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye. We are now in closed session.